Good evening. Welcome to Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13's Regular School Board Meeting, Tuesday, August 27th, 2013. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did you call the roll, please, Laura?
Ms. Meyer?
Here.
Mr. Landwehr?
Here.
Mr. Larkin?
Here.
Mr. Bardell?
Here.
Ms. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Palmer? Here.
Thank you. This is our custom mission statement. Columbia Heights Public Schools create worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. All right. Next this evening is our agenda approval, adjustments, announcements, and correspondence. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second. Motion by Laura, second by John. Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion is carried. So the announcement, September 2nd, Memorial Day, district is closed. September 3rd, Tuesday, first day of school, four students. September 10th, Tuesday, 5:00 PM, Subcommittee on Policy meeting, Superintendent Conference Room. September 10th, excuse me, Tuesday, 7:00 PM is the regular school board meeting here in the community room. September 17th, Tuesday, 5:30 PM, school board work session here in the community room. September 24th, Tuesday, 7:00 PM, regular school board meeting here in the community room. Superintendent Kelly, any correspondence?
Mr. Chairman members, there is none.
All right. Very good. Thank you. All right. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the board. The board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. However, the board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Is there anyone who would like to talk to the board? Seeing none, let's move on. Next agenda item is our consent agenda. Do I have a consisting personnel report? Do I have a motion?
I'll move that forward.
Second.
Motion by Missy, second by Laura. Any discussion on consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion is carried. Next is our acknowledgement of contributions. Whereas Minnesota Statute 123B.02 permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district requests donations or gifts for any proper purpose and apply the same to purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as a trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the school board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District Number 13 that the school board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of $123. The detail is a donation of $43.05 was made to Valley View Elementary by Wells Fargo Foundation for Student Needs, and a donation of $79.95 was made to Valley View Elementary by Lisa Mora for Student Needs. So the total for this fiscal year, which started July 1st, is $123. Do I have a motion to accept?
I'll move that.
Second. Motion by Ted, second by John. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion is carried. Thank you very much. Discussion reports, information items. Board members can report on board activities since last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. Lori?
I was attended the work session last week, and that's short and sweet. That's my report for this.
All right. Thank you. Ted?
Yeah, I was also at the work session, which was a very nice tour of North Park, and we got a view of the remodeling plans that the administration is considering, and that was a great opportunity to look at it firsthand, so thank you for that. New teacher breakfast for the new teachers that are in the district. It's always a fun time to meet all the new teachers and all the enthusiasm in the room. I was also at the Chamber of Commerce breakfast that was two days later, so I got to see them twice, so it was great. And hopefully, they appreciated meeting some of the businesses in the area, and we're all welcome, want to welcome, a warm welcome to all of them, in whatever way we can help them. I was also at the high school registration. That was very well-run, and you know, I think people were, knew their way around, and I just want to compliment the high school administration for doing a good job on that. And then the girls' tennis team had a little dinner, just to go over the rules, and so we got to meet the coach and the players, and that was great. And then finally, I think this was after our last board meeting, I was at the Recreation Department play, the Mill Street Players Till Death Do Us Part. That was a murder mystery, and we have a lot of talent in this district, and they didn't disappoint again, so it was a lot of fun.
Great. Thank you very much. John?
Let's see, I think I was able to, I went to the SECA softball fundraiser. I was actually got to be a part of that. Not a very productive part, but a part nonetheless, at least when it came to playing softball. I also was able to go to the new teacher induction. That was, actually, that was a lot of fun. There was a couple get-to-know-people games that we got to do that actually made it really easy to walk up and meet people. Also, the high school registration, I was up there, and I agree with Ted, it was run. It went really well. We're in and out in a short amount of time. I got a chance to watch the football team, the blue-gold scrimmage, and then they had a barbecue afterwards and a parent information. And then they also, I went and watched both the JV and the varsity team scrimmaged on Saturday in Delano. That was quite the setup. There was probably six or seven different teams that the kids were running plays against, so they got a lot of exposure to a lot of different things. And I thought they did a really good job, so. And then the work session at North Park as well.
Great. Thanks, John. Missy?
I attended the West Metro Education Program Board meeting. I also met with my fellow board members at the Subcommittee for the Board Evaluation. I also was at the blue-and-gold barbecue and game. Good luck to the football players there, they did a good job. Nice meeting with some of the parents and working some of the, I was working the concession stand, helping with that. I also attended the work session, and I did have a meeting with the football coach, and also a meeting with Kathy Kelly, which I enjoyed very much, thank you. And then I also was at the Delano scrimmage. Again, all I can say is, these kids are working really hard, and especially in the heat that we've had. They're still out there practicing and working diligently, and so go out and start supporting them. We have a game Friday here, so get out there and support the football players and all the hard work they've done, especially this week. It's really important. And that's it. Go Heights!
All right. Thanks, Miss.
JV has a game on Thursday.
Do they?
It's home at 4:30, I think, and then the high school game is at 7:00 on Friday.
Yep. The JV games usually are always on Thursdays now, and then the games are on Friday, the football games. There are some on Saturday. Don't we have two, Matt? Okay. Great.
Thank you. Hey, Laura?
Oh, well, let me see. I was also at the work-study session over at North Park. It's kind of fun to go to a different venue, you know, always very nice. And we got a tour of the facility, and we're presented with information about some of the special challenges that we have with that building, with security and space needs. And we got to see both of their libraries, one of which was in a storage closet, which kind of concerned me, but we're going to be addressing that. And also taking a look at the new third-grade learning space, because the learning center from second grade, the students are going to be moving up to the third-grade classroom space and how that's laid out and stuff. And not all the furniture was in there yet, but they said that they will have it before school starts, and that's a good thing, so that was kind of fun. I was able to briefly pop my head in at the Chamber of Commerce breakfast. I was there for about 20 minutes, so I had a chance to at least check out some of the new, the new staff. They look energetic, enthusiastic, and it's really pretty exciting. I look forward to actually meeting them tomorrow, so. And that's pretty much it for me.
Great. I also was at the work session and enjoyed very much being at North Park and seeing potential plans for working with that school and bringing it into the 20th century, 21st century. Well, you know.
One of those centuries?
One of those centuries. And I was at the teacher induction last Wednesday, and I agree with John, it was, it's always fun, and all the enthusiasm and smiles, and you know, right before, you know, school starts, everyone's enthusiastic, and it must be a really good group, because Director Burkus and I went out on the bus tour, you know, of the Heights District and the different schools, and they actually got some of my jokes, so.
[laughing]
So it must be a good group, but, no, loads of fun, and just the enthusiasm was really infectious, and, you know, it was really, really great fun, so I really enjoyed it. Superintendent Kelly?
Well, the E-12 administrative team had their annual administrative work-study, and the focus this year was on supporting world-class learners, creating the world's best workforce by 2017, and implementing, the implementation of early learning that's come through in legislation. Individual principals and directors presented the challenges and pressing opportunities that they have for the 2013-14 school year. And then, as everyone's mentioned, scaling the heights happened, the new teacher induction program. We hosted 25 new employees, new hires, on a three-day orientation to the district, and I have to agree with everybody, they really are a great class, and we call them the rookies this year, but we're gonna, it's gonna be fun having them around. I want to thank everybody that was involved in that, particularly those that came and participated, but teaching and learning does an inordinate amount of work, putting that all on. They make it look so easy, you forget, because we're all having so much fun, but I want to thank Dwayne Burkus, and Zenas Denvig, and Wendy Bornetton, really for organizing the whole deal, and all of the support, and making it so easy for both the inductees and us, so thank you for that. In addition, we, I attended the AMSD Executive Committee meeting. A major focus of this meeting was planning the Early Learning Conference that will be sponsored by the Association of Metropolitan School Districts in November, and I believe that we will be part of the presenter list for that conference, because we've been doing kindergarten for the last 10 years and have done so much with EL. I had coffee and conversations with community members, and did have a school board meeting with Missy Lee, and also with the school board chair, attended the school board work-study session, and then, I have to say, this is really a fun time. Last week, the new teachers came back. This week, on Monday, all the rest of the staff came back, and next week, the students come back. It's about as good as it gets, so it's full of energy around here, and we're, we'll be off and running starting September 3rd, so children don't forget to be on board your buses and walking to school on September 3rd. That's it.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Next on our agenda is introduction of our new K-12 Activities Director, and I'll turn it over to Lindsey Bennett.
Chair Bardell, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to introduce Matthew Miller, the new K-12 Activities Director, and I'll read a little bit about his background, and I have to read, because there's so much to read about, so I'll have to read it right from his resume. He previously was the dean at the high school, and he started his new role August 1st, 2013. He earned his Bachelor of Arts in Health Education and Physical Education from Bethel University. He received his Master of Arts in Organizational Leadership from Northwestern College. He holds a K-12 principal license, in addition to being a graduate of the Costa Rican Spanish Language Academy. He is a graduate of Columbia Heights Public Schools. He's been the Columbia Heights Public Schools Alumni of Distinction, and in 2008, he was recognized by former U.S. Secretary of State Colin Powell with the Above and, National Above and Beyond Citizen Honor for rescuing and aiding up to 12 victims of the I-35 Bridge collapse. And I'll pass it on to Mr. Miller.
Good evening, Chairman Bardell, members of the board, and Superintendent Kathy. I want to first talk about, I'm honored to be in front of you right now as the new A.D. for Columbia Heights Public Schools. I'm more excited to even serve our kids here in our community through the activities and athletic program. Couple of goals this year I'm really going to focus on is changing the culture in our buildings to really excite and enthuse the kids to be active beyond the classroom. That's my number-one goal, just to instill the Heights pride in the kids, so they can wake up in the morning and be proud of where they're going. Number two is to increase overall participation in all activities and athletics. And number three, I really want to emphasize with the kids to make sure they're learning good sportsmanship through competition. Let's see, I'm going to give you an update on the weather, since it's been extremely hot. I've been looking at the weather every hour on my phone, making sure I'm within the guidelines of Minnesota State High School League, and I've been communicating with our athletic trainer to make sure we're okay to practice and postpone practice, and if we have to cancel, like we did tonight, we canceled the soccer game just because of the heat. And so, I just want to communicate, we are within guidelines of the Minnesota State High School League, and safety is always first. And lastly is our conference update. Columbia Heights, along with Fridley, is placed in the Tri-Metro Conference, and this will begin fall of 2014. The north suburban will dissolve after this school year. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Miller? Yeah?
Well, I just want to say welcome, and I'm just really happy to see you here. I think you're going to do a great job, from the words of my son. Yeah. He was very excited to see that you're here, and so are many, many of the other kids that are here, so I think you're going to do a great job, and we look forward to seeing everything that's going to be happening. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know the girls' tennis team is also excited as well, and thank you for looking out for the safety of our students, that we had two tennis matches canceled, but better safe than sorry, definitely.
Well, again, welcome on behalf of the board. Welcome to your new position, and all we ask is, you know, do your best and use common sense and keep our kids safe. And we know and have confidence that you will do all those things, so.
Thank you.
We appreciate your, you know, your Heights pride and teamwork and willingness to do whatever it takes, so, thanks.
Thank you.
All right.
And Mr. Miller?
Go Heights!
Go Highlanders!
Got that, too.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Matt.
All right. Next on our agenda, Lindsey is going to tell us about some minor changes in the employee handbook.
Chair Bardell, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Each year, we update the employee handbook, so on your packet was the 2013-2014 Employee Handbook. There was very minor revisions this year. A lot of it came from the business office, so thank you, Bill. Just some change to forms and procedures. We also had a little language change to a statute for teacher evaluation, the number of days that teachers had to be evaluated, it's within the first 90 days. So the handbook was completed. We always have our attorney take a look at it. She said it all looked good. So next step is we'll get it out to staff, have them sign off that they've read it, and then we'll be ready for another school year.
All right. Any questions for Lindsey on this? So minor, no substantive changes?
I just have a comment. Welcome back.
Oh, thank you very much. It's good to be back.
Good point. Welcome back.
Thank you. I get to go home now, too, or so.
All right. Thanks, Lindsey.
You're welcome.
All right. Where are we here? Next on our agenda, facility update. Bill Holmgren, our Director of Finance and Operations, will give us a quick facility update.
Chairman Bardell, members of the school board, Superintendent Kathy Kelly. And we thought it'd be fun to just take a quick look at what we did at Highland. We finally finished now Highland. Remember, we started here a couple of years ago with the addition on the back, and then we went now and did the remodeling of the old kindergarten rooms to our designated art and science rooms. So I wanted to give you a look at what that looks like. I'll just do that quickly. One thing, if you remember, when you came into the building towards the kindergarten rooms before, this door was not there, okay? There was two small, long rooms between the two rooms for kids to hang up their coats and so forth. Well, that's been taken out, and we've put together a nice conference room for the elementary school. Here's the outside of it, and of course, we don't have the table yet, that will, that's coming here very shortly, but it truly turned out to be a nice room where they can use and to meet and have some meetings, where they really don't have a conference space in that building right now. If we move on over to the art room, which this is the, actually, the room on the north side. You can see, it really freshened up, it looks really light. We added some new cabinetry, and I think the room just turned out very well. Principal and teachers are very, were happy with the way it turned out. Here's a, we have a good place now for the art kids to be able to clean up when they're done. Nice, nice sink we put in here for them. This building actually has a kiln. On the backside of that conference room is this small room where we have put a kiln in, so they're very excited about being able to use that. Now, over on the other side, you see, we found Marie Burke actually working late today, because we were taking some pictures, and she didn't run away from us, which was nice. So this is the opposite side now. Well, most people are pretty shy, you know, when they take pictures. But here's the science room on the other side. So they're, they're pretty close, looking the same. Of course, we don't have a kiln on this side, but I just wanted to give you a look at the buildings. You can see how the lighting is different. It's very light in these rooms, new floors, it's just a nice, fresh look, and the teachers definitely have a lot more space than they've had in the past to run those programs. So any questions on that?
No more art on the cart?
No, not in this building.
The rooms look beautiful.
So I, I guess I'm pretty happy the way they turned out, and talking with Michelle and the teachers involved, they're all very, very pleased and appreciative of how they turned out.
I would like to echo that. I was over yesterday afternoon and spoke with the science teacher and the art teacher and Principal DeWitt, and they're, they're delighted. The art teacher was ecstatic, because the floor covering is primary colors of splotches. I mean, attention to detail is, it turned out beautifully, and they both echoed that they were so glad that the board had really committed to both art and science in the elementarys. So thank you for that from them. They are loving it. You'll have to stop over and see it.
Great.
So that's just a quick update. You saw over at North Park last week, the new room we put together there, but only part of the furniture. The rest of the furniture is being delivered this week, so they'll be set to go by next Tuesday. That was a really, our two bigger projects for the summer. So anyway, just, I guess, a quick report that they're done and they're ready to go, and they look good.
All right. Thanks a lot, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving along, our next agenda item this evening, board policy, first reading, and I'll just read these quickly. 703 is annual audit, 707, transportation of public school students, 709, student transportation safety policy, 711, video recording on a school bu, on school buses, 712, video surveillance other than on buses, 802, disposition of obsolete equipment and material, 902, use of school facilities and equipment. These policies will appear in a future agenda for approval. Anyone has any questions or comments on these policies, they are up on the website, so please send email or otherwise contact the administration here at the school.
I do have a question on 703.
Uh-huh.
If we have time. The annual audit policy. I noticed that on, the old letter G, it used to say the administration shall report to the school board regarding any actions necessary to correct any deficiencies or exceptions noted in the audit, and that's stricken now, and I'm wondering why that would be.
Generally, the auditor does it for us, but Bill, do you want to speak to that?
But they also will be reported to this, like, of all the, if there's any type of deficiency found, it will be reported, there will be a plan to fix it.
Okay.
It looks like it was, G is stricken, but it's rewritten farther up here.
Oh, I missed that. Yep, it is in there. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, it was sort of a...
It was moved.
I think it was moved, re-lettered, numbered, whatever.
Great. Thank you.
Yep. All right. Next on our agenda is school board evaluation, and I put all three of our names down, because, you know, we should all talk about what we're recommending here, but in essence, what, what we decided to do was, we have a fairly succinct 10-question survey that we were proposing to do Survey Monkey on, in conjunction with a longer version that sort of explores those subject areas. So the idea would be, is when, when you're taking the short 10-question survey, you would be referring to a longer, what do we call it, Ted? Points to consider. Points to consider, thank you. And in answering those questions, okay, to put some context behind, you know, what those questions are, are asking, and, and then, part of the other, part of it we decided to do is, we were going back and forth between, do we want a short survey or a longer survey, and we said, let's do the short one, but then in the work-study, we would break, take each of these subjects in the points to consider and take some time and talk about them. So that way, over the course of, of a year, we're, you know, talking about subjects that are of interest to the board and performance, so.
So breaking, instead of trying to analyze the survey in one session, we would be breaking it out into subject groups. I like the, I like the way of starting with a question and then having your context, because you can find that one individual will read it one way, and it's all good. We may be interpreting it different and coming up with different results. I mean, the same question, so it'd be nice to have that context in there, so we're all answering the same questions. So I think that sounds pretty good. Can't wait to see the finished version.
Anything to add?
Yeah, I guess I would just say that the points to consider came from the other surveys that we were presented with, and they, they are relevant to each one of these major points. So, you know, if a board member wanted to rate each point, they could, and then share it with the board, or it's really up to the amount of, you know, what each board member, what they want to look at. We didn't want to make it too long, but yet we want to do a thorough job and, and hit the points that need to be hit on. Not that we have to go through each one of these points to consider, but I think we said we would discuss it.
Yep.
Each highlight, or each major point, and then we could use these points to consider as discussion stimulus.
Yep.
So. And when you see a D in each, after these points to consider, what that means is, is some points apply to several of the major headings, and the D means it's duplicated other places, so if you're doing, if you're measuring each, each of the points to consider, you probably don't want to do, do them multiple times, and that's why the D is there, so that you don't have to repeat your, your measurements each time. And at the end of this evaluation, there are questions taken from the lighthouse survey, or lighthouse study, on practices of effective school boards and how they, and how they affect and enhance student learning, or they inhibit student learning. So those are, where those came from, and then at the, and also, there are questions on trust, and from David Horsogger's materials. So I think we all, I think we recognize that those are important issues, and that's why those are there. So I think we all, I think we recognize that those are important issues and that's why those are there.
So the survey is going to be these 10 questions with the points to consider and then in the work session, we'll have discussion about the points to consider and each specific topic of those, okay?
Yeah. We haven't quite figured out whether we would take them in order or we'd decide on which one we want to talk about. I don't know, I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth. I don't think we quite decided how we were going to do that way. I think we agreed that we would present to the full board the idea of doing that and seeing if...
And that's, and that's just it, it's points to consider. We're not going to go through every single point. This is just some meat to think about as you're doing your survey. That then we would have those discussions. And we also talked about just taking one question every now and then and having a discussion. And that's kind of where that goes. So all of those questions, no, you don't have to answer, you know, but you just use it to reflect, you know? And then that'll give us some things to discuss.
And if we take, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
If we take one point at a time, it shouldn't be too long of a discussion each meeting.
Yeah.
So that we can tackle each one every, every meeting and keep it moving along.
Yeah.
One point being one of the, like, board works together as a team number one.
Yeah.
Because it's been several years since we've actually really dived into the operation of the board.
I like the idea of that in the work sessions and that we'll all be on the same page. Whereas we sit as a group and we come to terms that this is what we as a group say means a board works well together or this is what. So I think then if something comes up later, we've got something to fall back on for, you know, our baseline of what we're comfortable with as a group. So I like the idea. Thank you guys for putting the work into that, I appreciate it.
Lot of work, thank you. It sounds, it sounds really intriguing, I'm looking forward to this.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks everybody.
Thank you.
All right. Move on to our action items. Our first action item this evening, board will be asked to approve the publication of milk bid.
Chair Bardel, Directors of the School Board and Superintendent Kathy Kelly. It came to our attention, we're starting to get the books closed up for last year, that we actually spent $102,000 on milk last year for our students. And as you know, the bidding law is we spend over $100,000, I've got to go out and do an official bid to buy that product. So all I'm asking tonight is you give me authority to publish in the paper for milk bids. And then we'll be bringing those back to you in about a month from now.
I'll move that forward.
Motion by Missy, second by Ted, any discussion on the milk bid? Do we just stay with the current vendor then until that comes back?
Yeah, our auditors were actually here last week and I talked to them about it. And they said, yeah, we'll just use our same vendor until we know who we're gonna switch to. And it might be the same vendor at the end, but they're okay with it. I did check that out.
Okay. Any other questions?
You know what the timeframe is then?
Well, what we have to do, we have to advertise the bids for two weeks. It'll be in the paper when it publishes next week, it won't be in this week. And then we wait for a week, we give a week to give, get all the information in and then we bring it to you. But because the way our board meetings come together, we're not going to get it done for the first meeting in September, so it'll be in the last meeting. So it'll be a month from now is when we'll take action to accept it.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion is carried. Thank you, Bill. Next is the board will be asked to approve a resolution for the conversion and approval of levy authority.
Yeah. We, at a special call work session we did two weeks ago, I went through a lot of information on levies and I'm going to go through some of the information now too so that we have it on public record. A little bit of a more condensed version, but I think we definitely hit all the points I think we need to talk about tonight to make this decision. First of all, during the legislative session this last spring, the legislature did some things to levy authority that actually, a lot of districts have looked for this for quite a few years and we were pleased to see it come to be. But the legislature established a location revenue as a new component of general education revenue. And really, there's two pieces that we'll be talking about this evening. First, a board-approved revenue, which gives more control to, or local control to school board over the levy authority. And then a location equity revenue, which really compensates urban and suburban districts with a higher opera, what recognizes that we have higher operation costs than districts outstate. The first part of that is really the legislature reconci, reconc, recognized, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time talking this evening. Legislature recognizes location equity revenue as an essential component of general education. Really, what we're looking at here is, for many years, the legislature knows that they haven't been giving school districts enough revenue as they should. So they really understand that the money we're talking about switching to is really a piece of education revenue that every district should have. And that's what they've done going forward. What this is doing is allowing school boards to convert up to $300 per adjusted pupil unit, referendum authority from board-approved to board-approved by majority vote. So districts that don't have any operating levy, you can see that they're actually getting $300 worth of levy that they don't have now. So this is really a component of regular general education that the legislature believes all districts should have. There was a similar process when this was done when Jesse Ventura was in office, this was back in 2002, where there was a converging, at that time, of anybody with operating levy was converted to great state aid. So same thing happened here, if anybody who didn't have an operating levy, all of a sudden got some more money. So this is actually working in the same way, except the piece of, the piece of this won't be direct aid as it was in this point. It'll remain levy, just as it is now. And really what this does for us, really, when we look at our future cash flow and our revenue stream, we're really trying to eliminate some of that risk when levies come and go. Okay, the other, the other piece of this, legislature also recognized schools have been underfunded, especially in the metro area. The location revenue is intended to adjust for higher cost of school operation in the metro area by providing access to revenue without voter approval. School districts with any land area in the seven-county metro area qualify for the conversion of 424 APU from their operating levy. And of course, we're in that seven-county area, so Columbia High School District is eligible and we actually received this conversion automatically, we don't take any action. The legislature is assuming we're going to do this. And I want to put just a comparison so you can see that we are talking about converting a levy from one type to another, but when we look at the total dollars that we're actually generating, it actually remains exactly the same. So we're not generating any more dollars for a school district, it's the same. So right now, we just started our fiscal year 2014, we have one levy. One operating levy generates us $3.5 million. For next year, for fiscal 2015, we'll end up with multiple levies. We'll have, we're looking at approving tonight, a board-approved $300 levy, which will generate a little over a million dollars. Location equity revenue, this is a piece I said would automatically happen with, from the legislature, generates us 1.4. And then the piece that is left in our operating levy is $298 per pupil unit. Of course, it's about exactly the same as the 300, so it generates us one, a little over a million dollars. You can see that in total, that amount is exactly the same as we're getting this year. So when we talk about the levy and going on the public, we're generating exactly the same number of dollars that we're doing right now, the way that we're levying now. The thing that really makes things interesting is the effects that do happen to the levy. Now, when we talk about the equity revenue, this is that, the shift of the 424 automatically. By letting that shift happen, we actually decrease our levy by $246,000. And this, by decreasing the levy, we get increased aid. So it's still a wash, but it's still less dollars that we're taxing our community. The board control piece of the levy actually decreases our levy by $176,000 or increases our aid from the state. And this is really only a categorical change, it still generates the same amount of dollars. Operating levy, what was left at 298 is, the equalization also in that formula decreases our levy by 164,000 or almost 165,000. So I think a little different way to look at this, right now, in fiscal 2014, all the operating levies are equalized in some way. It depends on the tax base of your particular district. And the, right now, we are getting, when you look at the 3.5 million dollars, 9% or 298,000 is actually of that 3.5 million is aid from the state of Minnesota. So we're not levying 3.5, we're actually only levying 3.2. Okay? Now, when it shifts, for 2015, the state aid piece shifts to 32%, or 1.136 million. So instead of levying that full 3.2, now we're only going to, whatever this ends up being, we're only going to levy to 2.7. So that's a decrease to our levy. So that's the positive point of making this conversion. And then what I added here is, you know, the levy on it, in our district, the average home is approximately appraised at $100,000. Actually, this past year was $98,000. So we look at that average home in our, in our school district, this levy going down will decrease that particular homeowner's taxes by about $21. Now, this is approximate, depending if people are improving their houses and so forth. And we've got the fiscal disparities mixed in there too. This is just a best guess. Some are going to be a little bit more, some are going to be a little bit less. But it definitely is, you know, it's some dollars coming off of somebody's taxes that own the school district. Okay, talk about timeline quick, we talked about this at the last meeting. September 30th is the deadline, but the MDE is really saying it's best to take action by September 1st because that way, the new levies are included in the initial levy limitation reports, which come out by law. MDE's got to have that out to us by the 8th of September so that we can talk about it at our September meeting. Because we have to have a preliminary levy done by the end of September. And then we go ahead and we'll talk about it again in December before we put it on the tax rolls with the county. So one big reason to have it done by September 1st is to, so that's included in the initial levy limitation reports. Because if we do it later, then our reports change. And it's very hard for people to understand that the tax, that they, their tax statement that they receive in November is different than what they get next, next February, when they actually have the tax to pay. Of course, and then the converted amounts will appear on their two taxation notices and the correct amount. So tonight, I guess, recommendation from the administration, we recommend that you go ahead and convert $300 of our operating levy to a board-authorized levy for the reasons we just went through. Any questions?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion by Missy, second by John, discussion.
Yeah, I do have one question. Now, if we were to make this commitment tonight, how long are we locked into it or can it be reviewed on a year-by-year basis?
Well, if you look at the resolution that was put in your board packet, the number of years that were, that would be authorized to carry through right now would be five years. But this can be looked on a yearly basis, it doesn't have to be that way.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, go ahead.
So just so I understand it correctly again, the difference between passing this and not is roughly $500,000 more onto the public for taxes if we didn't pass this?
That is correct. Like we talked about, what happens is if we don't do the conversion, assuming that all the, most districts in the state of Minnesota do the conversion, all their operating levies come down. Right now, the average operating levy is a little bit higher than what we have as an operating levy. So all those averages fall down. If we don't change ours, ours stays up where it is, it'd be about $1,000 per pupil unit, where the average drops down to about $300. Now, it looks like we have a huge levy compared to other school districts. And because of that, we don't get the equalization aid. So not only, not only do we not get the change in the levy, we actually lose equity aid, which is about $180,000. Okay? So that's why it changes, because the equalization fact, the equalization formula looks at all school districts and looks at where your operating levy is compared to other school districts. So if ours looks high, it looks like we don't need as much because we have more than other school districts. But in reality, we don't, we just hadn't converted it. So by converting it, it brings our, our number will be down to 298, which is under again, the average for the state of Minnesota.
So summarizing all that, that, it would be $500,000 plus $180,000 difference?
That's correct. 500 is the direct relationship with the levy, which would be tax. They're not going to see that savings and that tax of that $21 approximately, it would stay where it is now. But we would lose $180,000 in actual equity aid, which, you know, you convert that down, it's probably about three teachers we'd have to eliminate to pay that bill.
And this was by operation of state law, that this all occurred?
This, this came through, this brings legislative session and it's new levy authority that they've offered us. Because they really see this as something every school district should have, because not every school district does. So people, so any district that does have some type of operating levy, they're just, they're converting what you already have. So back to what we talked about, we didn't, we're not generating more dollars and we're actually lowering the tax rolls and it's giving us a more firm cash flow in the future. So, you know, when we look at it, it's definitely in the best interest of the school district to go ahead and make the conversion.
And the reason you say we have a more firm foundation is that we wouldn't be going out to the public to ask for that?
Well, what, we still have to, remember, what's left in the operating levy is $298. That will still expire, just like the one we have now is, and we'd have to ask for that to be renewed. You can see if we don't renew that, we're going to lose a million dollars in aid. So what would happen if we don't renew the larger, we would lose the full three and a half million. So it gives us a, it gives us a firmer revenue stream for future use.
Because part of it would be board-approved?
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you.
All right, let me read the resolution. Resolution converting voter-approved referendum authority to a board-approved referendum authority. Be resolved by the school board of independent school district number 13, state of Minnesota, as follows. Current authority, the district has a current voter-approved referendum authority that is estimated to be $1,022 per adjusted pupil unit for fiscal year 2015, after preliminary adjustment by the Minnesota Department of Education in compliance with Minnesota statutes, section 126(c) 17 as amended. Paragraph two, conversion of referendum authority pursuant to Minnesota statutes, section 127(c) 17 subdivision 9a, the board hereby determines to convert $300 per adjusted pupil unit of its voter-approved referendum authority, which expires after taxes payable in 2015 to a board-approved referendum authority of $300 per adjusted pupil, excuse me, pupil unit. This board-approved referendum authority shall be applicable for five years, beginning with taxes payable in 2014. The board may subsequently reauthorize the board-approved referendum authority in increments of up to five years. This resolution has been adopted after June 30, 2013, and before October 1, 2013. Clerk is authorized and directed to submit a copy of the adopted resolution to the Minnesota Department of Education as soon as reasonably practical after its adoption, but in no event later than September 30, 2013. All right. Any other questions? Yeah?
Yeah, I have a comment. I just want to say to people, I've talked to people about this and, you know, the community, I don't think wants to have their voting rights taken away on this. That's what I've been hearing. So, and it's, it's lousy that we'd have to pay a penalty if we didn't vote to take away their voting rights on this, on these, on this issue. So, but that's legislature, we have no control over the legislature. And so I, from what I've been hearing from the public, and we've only had a few, a week to talk to people about this, since we learned about it, I don't think I can support this because the right to vote on, from the people that actually support this district and provide the money for this district, is pretty important. And it's very important. So, yes, there may be a penalty, but it's, it's worth it to have their rights preserved to vote.
Great.
Yeah, I, I've gone back and forth about this, but we are an elected board and we do represent the people. And, and the voters, of course, always have the option of going to the ballot box if they feel that our decisions were inconsiderate or incorrect. So, but we are, we are a district, we are at the whim of funding from both the legislature and also the... both the legislature and, um, also the, um, also, um, getting the approval for the levy from the voters. I, I would prefer to be, to be able to have, um, the public involved in this process, um, but I also do not wish, we do not have, um, we don't, we don't really have much of a, of an option on this. I, I wish that it was a shorter term, and, um, I'm, I'm concerned about further strings attached. Um, so that's why I was asking about whether or not it would be something that we could look at, you know, a year in the future, or two years in the future, to be able to, to review, to make sure that this is in the best interest of both the district and the public, so, I, I actually will be supporting this.
Yeah, John.
Bill, the risk of having to repeat yourself, tell me again what the ramifications are the, the penalty for not doing this financially is going to be to us?
Okay, um, twofold. First of all, if, if you don't do it, you're not gonna see the, the tax savings to the, to our, um, community, okay? That's the first thing. The second thing is, because we wouldn't do it, our operating levy stays at a high level, and because of that, when the legislature compares us with other districts, it looks like we have a high level of operating, um, referendum, and so, when, when they put the equity, the equity revenue formula against that, we actually lose aid from the state of Minnesota in the amount of a hundred eighty thousand dollars.
And what does that represent, again? You said the equivalent?
Approximately three FTEs when we talk about the teaching staff.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Ted.
But if, if that did occur, we could, um, re-increase our levy, um, for their property tax, preserve those positions, is that correct?
Well, you could ask, yeah, you could go back to this, to the border and ask for more money, which would turn around and increase your tax again to cover the penalty.
Okay. I guess I just, I also wanna say, I, I, I don't think, I, I regret that it's just five years, um, and I think that the wording of this resolution says it will be for five years, right?
Well, we're, we're asking, yeah, we're, this, this, this is the amount that, uh, they say they, they have authority to do. Um, like I say, I think it's in the best interest of the school district to go ahead with a full five years, and then, and then relook at it, but, I mean, at the same time, um, you know, it's not, it's, anything the board has ever said in stone, but, um, yes, it's, it's, it's for five years, and be ready to go forward with five years without having to take any action on it.
Okay. Because once we adopt this, I think it, there'll be momentum built, and it'll be very hard to go back and, and to, um, reverse it. That's my opinion.
All right, any other comments?
I have a comment.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I guess I, I too just wanted to say, I'm not sure that I'm really comfortable shifting, um, the authority from the taxpayers for the, for this levy amount from them to the school board. I would prefer that it stays with the voters. Um, unfortunately, the legislature has given us these restraints and, and has put a financial impact to us if we don't make this shift, but it's, it's a little, I have a hard time supporting it as well to take that right away from the, um, taxpayers. I, personally, my opinion is, I think it should remain with them. So, that's where I am, and it's, at this point, I don't think I can support this.
Yeah.
Well, and I, I, I think this'll pass, I, in the way it sounds, but, um, I think these are important points that we all brought up tonight, so.
Yep. No, that's, yeah, and that's why it's here, and that's why we take the time to talk about it, and, and if someone has questions or need clarification, or, or, um, you know, has, has, um, a statement to make about it, that's, that's why we do this, and that's why it's open, um.
I guess if anybody in the public has comments, it would be very helpful, um, you know, since we can revisit it, uh, to hear what the public has to say.
Yeah, public comments are always welcome, actually. All right, any other comments? Laura, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Meyer?
No.
Mr. Landwehr?
No.
Mr. Larkin?
Yes.
Mr. Bardell?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Palmer?
Yes.
All right. That, uh, resolution has passed. Thank you very much. Appreciate everybody's, um, comments and, and opinions, understand it's, you know, the legislature, uh, you know, it is what it is, and we all feel the way we feel, and it's all correct. All right, moving on. Northeast Metro, nine sixteen Health and Safety Levy Resolution Bill.
Again, on, on a yearly basis, remember, we're members of, uh, Northeast Metro, District Number Nine Sixteen. Um, the buildings that they have in place have the same types of needs our buildings does, when, when we talk about, uh, health and safety projects. Um, I put in your, uh, packet, there's, is an exhibit talking about how much they're planning to, um, um, levy as a whole for their district. You can see that there's a small increase from a fiscal two thousand fourteen to two thousand fifteen of about six thousand dollars. How this affects, um, our levy from District Nine Sixteen is about, uh, it's a little over four hundred dollars. So it's, 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 I, I guess, when we look at, especially the cost of what, um, different projects cost, is pretty reasonable, um, for our district. Uh, but what you're doing is you're, you, we, we need to have this, go back to their board before the levy, uh, so we're saying it's okay to levy this portion, again, from us for their buildings.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move that forward.
One second. Motion by Laura, second by Ted, discussion, yeah? Laura?
I, I actually have a comment. You see, um, nine sixteen is, uh, subject to the same, uh, requirements, restrictions, and statutes that all the K-12, uh, public schools are, are subjected to, but they do not have the authority, basically, to raise their own funds, especially for health and safety projects. Um, they have, um, quite, um, a number of, um, I've, I, I took a couple of, uh, facilities for, and there are, um, some, uh, special needs at some of their, at some of their buildings, and, um, one is, um, over at Capital View, they need to put in things like a sprinkler system, believe it or not, the school actually doesn't have one, and they can't do anything further until those needs are met. Um, right now, they're actually, um, asking for a levy for basic projects and nothing for extended beyond that, but they cannot complete these, these, um, these things on their buildings unless we authorize this levy. So, pretty much, some of them.
That's absolutely correct, very good job, Laura.
Yeah, Ted.
And these, um, just like our health and safety are mandated by the state, these projects, is that correct?
Uh, yes. Um, there's either some type of a circumstance or a substance that needs to be taken care of, um, all our fires and safety is in here, like we talked, she just talked about the sprinklers. Um, fire comes in and say, this needs to be done, this is cold, you need to follow this code, you, we have to turn around and, and go ahead and do with that, that project. So, yeah, any, anytime I bring a health and safety project to you, it's something that we have to do, it's not really, we have a choice, we can delay it or wait.
Yeah, so this is a much easier vote to take.
Yeah.
All right, bear with me, I'll read the motion here. Resolution approving Northeast Metropolitan Intermediate School District Number Nine Sixteen's Health and Safety Program Budget and authorizing the inclusion of a proportionate share of those projects in the district's application for health and safety revenue. And that's just the title. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent District Number Thirteen, State of Minnesota, as follows. The School Board of Northeast Metropolitan Intermediate School District Number Nine Sixteen has approved a Health and Safety Program Budget for its facilities for the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year in the amount of ninety-four thousand one hundred nine dollars. The various components of this program budget are attached as an Exhibit A here, too, and are incorporated in this resolution by reference. Said budget is hereby approved. Minnesota statutes, section one twenty-three B point five seven subdivision one as amended provides that if an intermediate school district's health and safety budget is approved by the school boards of each of the intermediate school district's member school districts, each member district may include its proportionate share of the costs of the intermediate school district program in its health and safety revenue application. The proportionate share of the costs of the intermediate school district's health and safety program for each member school district to be included in its application shall be determined by utilizing a blended rate, where half the rate is determined by multiplying the total cost of the intermediate school district health and safety program times the ratio of the member school district's net tax capacity to the total net tax capacity of the intermediate school district, and half of the rate is determined by multiplying the total cost of the intermediate school district health and safety program times the ratio of ADM utilization by the district to the total ADM utilization. The inclusion of this proportionate share in the district's health and safety revenue application, fiscal year two thousand thirteen hereby approved, subject to approval by the Commissioner of Minnesota Department of Education. Upon receipt of the proportionate share of health and safety revenue attributable to the intermediate school district program, the district shall promptly pay to the intermediate school district the applicable aid or levy proceeds. Any other questions, Cummins? Should I take the roll, please, Laura?
Ms. Meyer?
Aye.
Mr. Landwehr?
Aye.
Mr. Larkin?
Yes.
Mr. Bardell?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Palmer?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much, that resolution has passed. All right?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thanks, Bill. Um, the board will be asked to approve an increase in funding for the Columbia Heights Public Schools Integration Plan. Dwayne Burkas, Director of Teaching and Learning.
Chair Bardell, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board. Uh, I was here not too long ago, in the month of March, to ask for your approval of the two thousand thirteen, fourteen integration funds. Since then, uh, the legislature, um, after much debate, has, um, not only decided that integration will stay, but increased funding for some districts. We are one of those fortunate districts, uh, increase of approximately two hundred thousand dollars to our budget for the school year. That, it came, though, with, uh, caveat that we could not, um, go out and make new plans, but that this should be used to fund the plans that the board had already approved. Um, so, we stuck to that, and so our, um, plans got a little bit more robust within themselves, but they didn't, there were no new plans that were added to it. So I'm here tonight just to ask, uh, for your approval, because that's required now by MDE because of this increase in funds of the, um, new amount of dollars that have been, uh, provided to us for integration and achievement, as it's being called now. So, um, our funds are increased, our plan largely the same.
Great, I have a motion.
Second.
Motion by Ted, second by Missy. Questions for Dwayne? Discussion? Yeah, Laura?
Uh, yeah, um, when you, when you say that, um, that it's going to be more robust, um, what we already have going on, can you give me some examples?
Well, for example, we have, um, with integration, the opportunity to help with support staff for our, um, students, and so, one of those positions now has become bigger, it has more, uh, to it, um, for that person. Uh, we also have a program called Check and Connect, which is, uh, um, through the University of Minnesota, research has been shown to be, um, very powerful. We've increased, um, by one person, that program as well. So, um, those would be examples, I guess, we have, um, uh, in the area of, um, Avid. Now, we have more going on with the elementary program, so we've increased our budget, uh, there, so Avid is, is one area that would also have been increased greatly. Uh, we do have, uh, dollars in integration for arts and engineering, and so there is, um, some increase there, not, not as much, more towards, um, uh, where we could, having people, um, join programs that maybe were just resources, if we had that kind of money. Uh, there is some money for what we're called, what we call, um, RTI, Response to Intervention, and that would be in the, um, for technology or, um, software for those interventions, yeah.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, Ted.
I also see, uh, you have a, uh, money set aside for family involvement. Is that parental, um, involvement or education?
Yes, um, our, as you know, we have the REACH program now, that was, uh, started three years ago now, and we've, we're now working, this year, we're working at North Park and at, uh, Columbia Academy, back at Columbia Academy for the second round, actually. So we do have an increase of, of dollars there for funding for family involvement, involvement with, um, REACH, but we also have some other thing, innovative things that we're trying this year, including some home visits, and so we're, we're trying, um, as much as possible to be able to use funding from integration and from Title One, which also has some mandatory funding for, um, parent involvement, to take both of those, combine those dollars, and, um, really work closely with our schools to see if we can have some consistent programming across all of our buildings.
I think that's so critical, that's great to see.
Mm-hmm.
Any other comments, questions? All right. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion is carried. Thanks, Dwayne.
Thank you.
All right, last on our agenda, School Board Out of State Travel. Boarded, we ask to approve, um, School Board Out of State Travel, and basically, what this is, is asking for prior approval of up to six board members to attend the National School Board Associate Conference in New Orleans in April of two thousand fourteen. The expenditures are already reflected in the current School Board budget, so. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Missy. Discussion?
Yeah, is, uh, I, I would like the board to consider perhaps not approving up to six School Board members, but instead to come up with either some sort of a rotation or appointment, um, to limit, to, you know, well, to basically increase the opportunities that we may have and not spend so mu- incredibly much on out-of-state, on out-of-state. I, I, I know I haven't been to one of them, and, um, as of yet, I really haven't seen, um, I, I haven't seen the dollars really reflected in any type of student achievement yet, and, um, I, I would be willing to send representatives, but I would like the board to consider maybe limiting it to less than school, six board members, either, uh, by appointment or rotation. That would be my personal, and I've brought this up a couple of times, I'm gonna try one more time, so, hopefully I can.
Comments? Yeah, Ted.
Yeah, I think the cost per board member is roughly, it comes out to be around two thousand, maybe you can help me?
I think it's, we have, we have budgeted up to three, um, in the budget, that, um, last year, we were under budget, um, substantially, um, and it all depends upon airfare and registration costs and things, uh, the workshops people take as well, but we have a max of three thousand dollars per person.
Okay. And that's for the, just for clarification, that's for each board member for the full year?
That's for.
The budget year.
That's for out-of-state travel.
Yeah, for, right, not just NSBA, but for all out-of-state travel.
But traditionally, it's been.
Yeah.
Put to a ban.
Yeah, I think last year, if I remember right, nobody else traveled out of state except for NSB, or for this year, I'm sorry, this year.
And it's up to, isn't it? It doesn't mean that you have to go.
No, no, it's up to six.
So I guess my point is, is that it can be as much as eighteen thousand dollars if all six go, which is pretty substantial. I don't know many other boards around here that, that send all, all of their board members, maybe somebody else does, but I haven't run across any other boards that do that.
Yeah, I guess I don't know the answer to that question.
Which, which is, that's, that's my concern, is that we seem to be out of, out of line from what other school districts are doing, and it, it is a substantial pause, so I, I would too, would like to see less than six going each year, and have, make some sort of a, a rotation, um, arrangement. 'Cause we talk about teachers, I mean, that's, that's a teacher, right there, at least, a teacher's salary. Oh, I'm sorry, I was thinking more, no, I take that back, half a teacher's salary.
Six Promethean boards.
Yes.
So what do we want to do?
Well, we've got the motion on the floor, you have to vote.
Yeah, I understand. Any other discussion on this? Laura?
Yeah, I guess I just, my comment would be, um, I mean, I, I just, this is my first year, and I saw some of the things that, um, people brought back to the board, I think people attended, I think there was some value, I think people brought back some good information. Um, just, um, in my personal business life, I mean, I've attended various technical conferences, I do see value in them. Um, my personal opinion, I think, sending all six people, or the potential of up to six people, seems a My personal opinion, I think sending all six people or the potential of up to six people seems a little excessive to me. I mean, typically, like at work, you know, we limit the number, two to three people out of our team that would attend a particular, one particular conference and rotate them. So I guess I would, could support that as well. I realize this, that the motion is for up to six, so that doesn't necessarily mean all six Board members would go, but the potential is there and I could support limiting that to either some type of rotation or limiting it to three or something.
So the motion is out there for up to six, so there's no more discussion?
Going to have for an amendment? Would that be appropriate?
I think so.
At this point?
As long as it's agreed to.
Um, I would, I would actually like to have that amended from up to six Board members to up to three.
Need a second, a second if that's... Can you do it when there's a motion? I think you have to pull a motion.
Not sure.
That's why.
I think the makers of the motion initially, if they agree to it, we can do it. But otherwise, we would need to, I don't know, I'll have to look at the rules for that. I don't know.
I guess my, in my opinion, it says up to six, that at this point, I think that we could sit down as a group and have a discussion and bring it back at a work session. We could move this word as up to and then have more discussion, further discussion.
Let's see. Isn't this terrible? Modify a motion. Is the second required? Yes.
Do we have a second?
What vote is required? Majority? So we have to vote on whether?
The motion, the motion.
To amend.
Motion to amend.
Yeah.
As stated.
I think that's what this says. I'm reading it right?
And add, and substitute three.
Uh, this is right here.
On there, okay.
Request for permission to withdraw or modify a motion. The second required? Yes. It's amendable. This part is not amendable. Is it debatable? No. Majority. Can it be reconsidered?
It'd be reconsidered.
Am I reading that right?
However, it can't, it can't interrupt an existing motion.
It can't?
Says right, may it interrupt? No.
Okay. So you're right.
Well, then how in the world do you amend a motion? Yeah, the motion is still out on the floor.
I believe it has to be defeated and then you could come back and you could amend it at that point, but I don't know if, just if, what Ted is saying is that can't be interrupted.
Yeah, that would be the procedure. If it can't interrupt an existing motion, we would have to vote on the current motion and then take up, if it fails, then to, then you can bring up the amendment. Unless the makers of the mo, informal rules say unless the makers of the motion agree to it, then we can move forward with the amendment.
All right. I want to hear an agreement there, so. Please correct me if I'm wrong. I think the next action is we vote on the motion of up to six Board members to attend the National School Boards Association, understanding that if that fails, then an amendment can be offered and voted. Is that what we understand?
Yes.
All right. With no further discussion, all those in favor say aye? Aye? Opposed?
No.
Sounds like four ayes, two nays.
No, I think it was three.
No, three, three. So then the motion fails.
Fails on the floor.
Okay. So now?
I would like to offer an amendment to the motion, striking six Board members and inserting three Board members. That'd make it pretty simple.
Yes, second.
Second.
All right. So a motion by Laura, second by Laura, to amend the motion to up to, if I heard it correctly, up to three Board members.
Yes.
Any discussion?
I think that way we could take turns. I like that idea.
Well, the motion is up to three. Right.
And we can always discuss how that's going to be allocated, allotted or voted on at another time.
Well, that's what I was saying. That's why we should have a discussion before we had done that before. So I don't know that I support this either because we haven't been able to sit down and have the discussion. So I would say that I would disagree with this and let's bring it back to a work session.
Any other comments?
I know, I'm just giving my opinion.
Of course.
Any other?
I guess I would just say if that's what everybody feels, then perhaps we should table this.
I think that would be my suggestion. I, I came in, I guess, thinking that it was approved last year. It was going to be, just move forward. There was never any, I wasn't aware of any concerns about the numbers. I'm not necessarily opposed to limiting the numbers either, but is three the right number? Should it be four? Should we go down to two? I mean, I think that, you know, if it's something we could take back to a work session, I'd be comfortable certainly discussing it. I don't have a problem with limiting the number, but just.
I, I like discussion, you know.
And that's, if there's a motion on the floor, then we.
Let me put something out there is, is that you could always bring forward an additional School Board member as a separate motion to approve one more School Board member if that came down to it. I would just like to see a little bit of restraint in our, in our schools.
That doesn't mean that we don't, we don't do that, but we can all have the sit down and have the discussion.
I know.
And I guess that, and I agree. So I mean, if there's a motion on the floor, if we wanted to really go back to a work session, then it just, it doesn't pass and then we can move forward.
It came up on the agenda today and, you know, this is why we're, I would like to, the motion is still out there, so.
Yep, for the amendment up to three Board members. Any other comments?
Remember, we still haven't voted on the motion either.
I'm sorry?
The main motion. We'd have to vote on the amendment to the motion before we vote on the motion.
Right.
Okay.
I guess I'm, I'm fine with tabling it as well and bringing it back to the, a work session and having more discussion around it, apparently. Like we said, people, this was just on the agenda and, and we have some different opinions and I think it's a good idea to talk about it, so.
We did not vote on the main motion. I thought we did. I thought that was what was defeated.
We voted on the motion, but not on the amendment of.
We have to amend it first.
We have to vote on the amendment. We can't vote on tabling it until we either vote up or vote down the amendment. And then we have to vote up or vote down the.
Thought you were referring to the initial motion when you said the main motion, so.
We're just talking about those two words. So, just two little words.
Yeah, I agree. Looking at the rules, you can't, a motion to table can't interrupt.
Right.
It's a current motion, so.
Vote this one up or down.
All right. Any other discussion on the amendment to this motion of up to three Board members? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay?
So it's voted down. Three, three brings it down. So now we can bring it to a.
I would call a division.
I'm sorry?
I think it was four to two.
I think it was. It was four, it was four, two.
Was it?
Oh, was it?
Laura said.
Laura voted no.
Okay.
So it's four, two. So it's the motion or the amendment.
Thank you for the clarification. I didn't know.
Yeah, I didn't either. I thought it was three, three.
That's what I heard.
Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Now can we motion to table?
Right.
Or do we just let it?
A motion to table would be appropriate or we could just leave it.
We can postpone table.
I'll make a motion to table this, the discussion on the School Board travel out of state.
Second.
I would just, I'd think that's appropriate because.
Then you have to vote.
Yeah.
Because I made a motion.
Okay.
And table till?
To table it.
Right, but there's still discussion prior to voting.
Right.
Yeah.
Till, when, when are we tabling it till?
We can get it on a work session?
When we can get it on a work session.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just leaving it open because we don't know what's on the next.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Will that work for you, Superintendent Kelly, as far as the approval you need? Can we delay this?
Yes and no. You can delay it, which you have, but you need to tackle it soon because when it opens for registration, it's hard to get the room and the rooms and the accommodations to go with. And then also, the longer we delay, the longer, the higher the prices go up as well. But most importantly, people, when they decide, when registration opens, they go for the rooms. And so we want to make sure that we have rooms and registrations secured for you and then affordable airfare for whoever is. So we could certainly delay it and you have tonight, but it would be nice in the near future if you came to a conclusion amongst yourselves on what you want to do with this and we'll be happy to support you either way.
And when does the registration start?
That I don't remember.
Okay.
I imagine this can probably wait until this, then we can do it.
I wanted to say October, but Ted, that might not.
That's, that, that.
I know it's in April, isn't it, the actual conference?
Yes, but the registration opens in October.
So we can do one work session and then bring it forward to the Board at the next School Board meeting, like towards the end of September. And that should, that should fall in line, shouldn't it?
It will certainly be a really full work study session coming up, but we'll certainly put it on. But it'll be one of, it will be one of the, well, we'll have to cover the other work as well, so it might be a longer work session.
I'll bring a sandwich.
All right. Motion to table till work study is out there. Any other questions, comments?
Actually, I think it'd be appropriate to table it till the next, to, to the Board meeting after we talk about it at the work study.
Yeah.
Yeah, which is, which is what I think I just, I just mentioned. If we could, as long as we could do it within that timeframe, considering that we do need to make a decision on this.
Is everybody okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Tabled till next regular School Board meeting. Thank you very much. Board topics. All right. All talked out. Seeing none during the meeting at 8:23.